Meeting would please come to order. This is a regular meeting of the Board of Trustees of the Village of Womet. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening and thank you for joining us tonight. As I said, this is a regular meeting of the Board of Trustees of the Village of Womet. This is the point in the meeting where I normally say that we will call the matters in the order which they appear on the printed agenda, but we're not going to do that tonight. I need to leave the meeting before it concludes, and as a result, we've started this meeting earlier than normal. So after roll call, I will defer item two, public comment, to the end of the meeting. We will vote on item three, the consent agenda, and then move directly to the standing committee reports so we can address item 6.11, which is the Harper School zoning case. There are copies of the agenda on the table by the door, but it won't be as easy as normal to follow along to see when your matter will be called because we're going to be jumping around a bit. Now, if you do plan to address this tonight, we ask you, please, come up to the podium, please speak into the microphone, tell us who you are and where you live, as that may be relevant to the matter at hand. We ask that you speak clearly in the microphone so we can hear you, because everything you say and everything we say is being recorded. And from those recordings, minutes of the meeting are prepared. These minutes are available at Village Hall and on our website at womet.com. Also, our Village Board meetings are televised on local access Channel 6 and the Internet, and if you look up, you can actually see the cameras. And you can find archived videos of Village Board and other local government meetings at womet.com. Now, before each meeting, the Board receives a packet of agenda materials, and these materials are also posted on womet.com on the Friday before our meeting, so that residents and other interested parties can review the very same materials that the Board members receive. This week's packet contained 500 and ... I can't read my own text, 556 pages. So we've had an opportunity to review all the information in the packet, so if you do plan to address this tonight, we ask that you tell us the most relevant, most material, the things you really want us to focus on. We are community neighbors, and as such, we want our meetings to be as civil and courteous as possible, so as a courtesy to those around you, please take this time to turn off your cell phones and other devices. And while we are turning off our phones, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Wolf?
Here.
Trustee Sullivan?
Here.
Trustee Plunkett?
Here.
Trustee Dodd?
Here.
Trustee Kersman?
Here.
Trustee Pierce?
Here.
President Blinsky?
Here. We're all here, so we obviously have a quorum. The next item, as I mentioned, I'm deferring item two, public comment, until the end of the meeting. So move on to item three, which is the consent agenda. As described on the printed agenda, items that are routine business, which are not normally debated by the Village Board, are placed on the consent agenda. All items beginning with the number three are on the consent agenda, so tonight, the consent agenda consists of, starting on page one with item 3.1, all the items on page two, and then about half the items on page three, ending with item 3.1.5. Items on the consent agenda are up for approval tonight. If an item is not removed by a member of the audience and not removed by one of the trustees, it will be approved and it will not be discussed. So I'll begin by asking if there's any member of the audience who would like to remove an item from the consent agenda. May I see a show of hands. Okay, moving on, I'll ask if there's any trustees that would like to remove an item from the consent agenda. All right, seeing none, may I have a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
Still moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Madam Clerk, please call the roll. The motion to adopt the consent agenda.
Trustee Wolf?
Aye.
Trustee Sullivan?
Aye.
Trustee Plunkett?
Aye.
Trustee Dodd?
Aye.
Trustee Kersman?
Aye.
Trustee Pierce?
Aye.
President Blinsky?
Aye. So the motion carries the consent agenda has been adopted. If you are here for an item on the consent agenda, it's just been approved, and I'll clarify for people who are here tonight, again, all the items beginning with the three have been approved, and that includes land use item 3.4, 3.5, 3.6, 3.7, and 3.8. If you are here for one of those items, it was just approved. There will be no further discussion of those items or any of the other items on the consent agenda. And so, as I mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, we will now move directly to item six, standing committee reports, and the land use committee, trustee Pierce.
Item 6.1, I move that we remove from the table item 6.1.1.
Okay, there's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? All right, it's been removed from the table.
Okay, I move we adopt the ordinance pertaining to case number 2019Z011101 Dartmouth regarding a request for an expansion of a special use and a three-space parking variation to permit an addition to the existing building in accordance with the plan submitted.
Okay, is there a second?
Still ... aye, second.
Well, we're moving a little faster tonight, Trustee Sullivan, so it's okay. All right, I believe that was a second from Trustee Sullivan. Okay. All right, this item comes to us with a negative recommendation from the Zoning Board of Appeals, so it will need five votes tonight to overturn that recommendation, as we do with all zoning cases. Mr. Adler, would you please approach and summarize the issues of the case for us?
Sure. The question tonight for the Village Board to consider is, does the request meet the standards review for approval? And there's a couple of options that the Village Board has to consider. One is, if you vote yes, the request is approved, the addition is built, and the full-day kindergarten program can begin to operate. If no, and it's denied, the requested addition can't be built, except the applicant, if the applicant builds three conforming parking spaces on the 1101 Dartmouth Street property, then the addition and the full-day daycare can commence.
So let me just clarify that. This would have to be on the school's property?
Correct. It has to be.
Which is, you know, I live very close to that property. It's basically playground and open fields.
Right, and it would have, they would have to be conforming spaces, meaning they would have to have a conforming aisle with to access. It wouldn't be just three places a car could park. We'd have to make sure that...
They're actually sort of usable?
Exactly.
Is what you're saying?
Yep.
Okay.
What we always do is throw up the standards. These are the variation standards. I won't go through these, but we could refer back to them, especially use standards. Finding a fact in which the decision was based, there was a pretty significant finding by the zoning board. That's in your report. We could go back to these if we need to. Then I do have the platter survey, the site plan, and two areas, one that shows a little bit closer, and one that goes farther out showing Thornwood Park, if you need that.
Sorry, I'm just pulling up the findings of fact, if the trustees are interested, on page 480 of the PDF.
4E.
480, yes.
Okay.
Are there, so if I understand it correctly, the zoning ordinance provides for one parking space per classroom?
Correct.
And that's the issue here, that in adding three classrooms, they're not adding three parking spaces?
Correct. There are, the addition has four spaces, but they're losing one for circulation into the addition, so a net of three new classrooms, which requires three spaces, and because there are no parking spaces, this property obviously isn't currently complying with the zoning requirements for a school.
Got it.
Are there questions for Mr. Adler?
Can you go back to the aerial view for me for just a moment?
This one or the farther out?
The farther one. I was just trying to look at how many homes were on the north side of Dartmouth, so, or on the north side of Thornwood, so thank you.
Okay.
Of Jasonson's school.
Any other questions for Mr. Adler? Okay, don't go away, Mr. Adler. Dr. Lechner, if you'd like to approach, please. So, welcome. I will give you my little introduction that I give all applicants. The members of the Village Board, we've reviewed the report, so we're familiar with the project, and it is a pretty straightforward project. Please feel free to take a few minutes to describe it, but focus your comments on addressing the concerns that were raised during the Zoning Board meeting. Clearly, parking and traffic concerns were top of mind for the residents. The letters that were included in our packet from you describe some of those changes that you've already undertaken, but it would be of interest to us to talk about the outreach you've done to the neighbors, and then, you know, sort of what you've implemented and how you think it's working so far.
Yes, when we first were given notice of this concern, I was sadly surprised that the district had not been doing a good job with communicating with our neighbors. And we've already established an approach in which we can have neighbors sign up to our email and then give them regular communication, so they know about changes. Last year, we had a change with the start of the, the end of the school day on Friday, and they weren't notified, so of course, they would rightly be frustrated and concerned. So I would think that communication is the number-one thing that we have, I have addressed and are addressing in terms of our local community members. You did get the two letters that talked about some of the things, but we're not finished yet. We held a meeting with the community members on January 29th, and we've improved signage to clarify that there's no turns in certain areas, but also, we had to communicate with our police and also the crossing guards to make sure they understood the procedures that we have in place that are not going to prevent neighbors from accessing their home. I can absolutely understand if you can't access your home and you're told to turn around and go away, you should be upset with that, so we are very sympathetic to that. We've also prepared optional laminated cars, just as an extra layer of protection if neighbors want to have them, like, "I'm a resident, I'm not a parent," driving through here. We had the custodians put out new cones every day to enforce the village's no-parking zones that are at the corner of Greenwood and Dartmouth. We're also really encouraged, and I know that the community members were concerned that parents park, excuse me, that teachers park on Thornwood Park, the east side of Dartmouth or on the south side. And, you know, we have encouraged staff to do it, but we haven't said, "You must do this," because that's a personnel matter. But we really have been pushing for that, and we've had, made some differences with respective staff parking along those, along the park and the parking areas. And then, and the last thing is that we have another meeting scheduled that's coming up on March 4th at 8:15 a.m. And at that meeting, we've included the village engineers represented from the Police Department as well, and then we're going to talk about some of the recommendations that we made, get some more ideas, and this, we're not done with this yet, because we're going to have a new principal and a new superintendent, so we're going to make sure that this group gets a chance to meet the new principal and the new superintendent, so when we finish this year out, we're going to have a solid approach to communicating and addressing the needs as much as we possibly can as a school district. That's the summary.
Questions for Dr. Lechner?
Ray, could you explain your comment about it's a personnel matter? My sense is you're not allowed to tell teachers where, but I'd like to understand that, because I don't...
Yeah, yeah. You can't order staff to park here or there, you know? We can't, we can't make that be part of their, because it's a public street, and they could park publicly where they choose to. So, yeah, it's, that's, like, that would not be, you know, a good...
Of course...
But we can encourage, and we can reinforce, and we can incentivize.
Right, the village can also...
Yes.
The village can tell people where they can and cannot park.
Yes, that's correct. Yeah, and we have more ideas. I don't even want to say them here now, but I know that, for example, Central has parking along its streets, and it's signed for staff. So if we did something like that over there, again, this was just an idea that came up today, so we haven't even had a chance to look at it, but my point is that we're open to more options and ways to incentivize parking for staff to park away from the school.
Okay, thank you.
Trustee Dodd?
And so, your point about incentivizing the staff?
Incentivizing.
Incentivizing, thank you, sorry. So, I believe this is in our report, but it'd be helpful just for those in the room to hear this. So if we were to do that, in terms of the total number of parking spots and things like that, to where we would like them to park, not where they are parking, but many of them are, clearly, but where we would like them to park is basically on Thornwood Park, along Thornwood Park there, which there is...
Okay, the principal can help with this, too.
Roughly 45, 47...
Yeah, I counted 47, yeah.
47, yeah, I counted today there as well. So, there's 47 spots, and then you have spots in front of the school that are designated, I believe there's...
Right, those are designated.
There's six.
Six, right.
So that, in total, would be 53, roughly. And so we're talking about assuming that, we're, in terms of where we'd like them to park, really, it's six spots, which there are spots along Thornwood on the south side of the street.
Adjacent to the school property, right, which is, they, you say 11, I thought 13, but...
And so all of those would be, all of those would be acceptable spots for the staff to park. That would be unobtrusive to the community.
Correct.
Okay. And then, I just want to say, I thank you to you, Dr. Lechner, for putting this, these numbers together in the, at the 11th hour, that I have requested this this morning, but I want, I appreciate it. And really, what's just helpful is to see that, from my perspective, that, you know, it is our goal to have these schools in our community, you know, in our neighborhoods, and this isn't an unusual problem. And so I appreciate that, what you're doing, and trying to find the right way to get the parking off the street so that it doesn't affect the residents. But clearly, this shows a little bit that, you know, we...
If you have a neighborhood school that's tucked in the middle of a neighborhood, there isn't a big parking lot to go with it?
Yes.
That's, yeah, that's the problem.
And, well, I'd add to that, President Blinsky, that, and the residents in the community don't want a big parking lot on the schools. I mean, they want to play on the schools.
Questions for Dr. Lechner? Okay, don't go far.
Okay.
We're going to move on to public comment, but before public comment, I just want to address the residents that are here. You can, yeah, you can sit down. So before I begin public comment, I just want to address the residents that are here tonight, and potentially some that are watching at home on television. You know, be assured that your concerns about parking and traffic have been heard. They've been heard by the Zoning Board, and they've also been heard by the Village Board. As such, given my authority as Village President, I'm directing the Village staff to convene a meeting of the Transportation Commission to review District 39's parking and traffic policies for Harper, and that will offer residents another opportunity to voice any concerns that remain about the effectiveness of their plan. You know, after, I've been on the Board for eight years now, many of you know that. I've learned that parking and traffic and traffic signs and traffic calming and all of the things associated with our roads, it's very technical. And the Transportation Commission is assisted by our engineers, I don't see Ms. Berger here tonight, but the, their outside consultants, the Police Department, to evaluate these issues. It's not something that you sort of do on the fly and say, "Oh, hey, can we do this?" There's studies, there's review, I mean, there are real public safety concerns that go into these decisions about no turns or no parking and the like, or stop signs and things like that. So the Transportation Commission is the appropriate venue to work through and potentially tweak the policies. I'm confident, given District 39's, you know, cooperative attitude, which I expect nothing, we all expect nothing less, that when the issues were brought to their attention, that they would work with the community, plus the staff's expertise. We're going to figure this out as a community, and, but the Transportation Commission is the place to figure it out. So there will be a meeting, and it will be about Harper's parking. That will happen. Now, moving on. So prior to people addressing the Board, what I've done in meetings where there've been a lot of people coming on a zoning issue or another issue is, I've allowed people to register their support or opposition to an application without actually having to get up to address the Board. What we've done is we've asked people to raise their hands to show their support or their opposition. We count, and then we include that in the record. Of course, your participation is optional, but the idea of this is, it makes the meeting more efficient. It allows people to express their opinion a simple way, without taking the time to address the Board. Some people frankly aren't comfortable getting up and speaking, and for some people, it's just enough to have expressed their concern, and they don't feel the need to speak. So normally, it's you're either for it or against it. Tonight, I'm actually going to give you three options. First option is simply to register support for the application, you think the application should go forward. The second option is to register opposition to the application because of the parking and traffic issues, and if those were resolved, you wouldn't have opposition. And then the third opposition is just to register opposition, and regardless of the parking and the traffic issues, you're opposed to the application. So again, this is optional, but if you'd like to express your point of view on one of these threes, I'm going to give you the opportunity now. So if you'd like to express your support for the school's application, please raise your hand now. So it looks like five, okay? And if you'd like to express your opposition to the school's application pending fixing traffic and parking problems that exist today, please raise your hand now. Nine?
Ten.
Ten?
I have ten.
Oh, ten, ten, yes, ten. Okay, and if you would like to express your opposition, basically period, to the school's application, please raise your hand now. Okay, that's an easy count, zero. All right, so now we'll move on to what normally happens during public comment, is, may I see a show of hands of those who would like to address the Board tonight? Five, okay. The podium is yours, just line up, and I'll remind you of the village's rules for public comment during a Village Board meeting. Each person is allotted three minutes to speak, and individuals will be allowed to address the Board only once. Those are our normal rules. And Mr. Frenzer is responsible for letting you know when your time is up, so whoever would like to go first, please. Welcome.
Good evening. My name is Elizabeth Matlin, and I live at 2410 Greenwood Avenue. And thank you for letting me speak tonight. The first part of what I was going to say is, we're a group of five that are going to be speaking tonight, and we have coordinated, we have coordinated our comments to be a very concise summary of the resident materials that you received in your meeting packet. What I am going to speak about and bring to your attention is the petition that we submitted to you requesting resident permit parking for residents on Greenwood Avenue between Hunter and Dartmouth. This petition was signed by residents in 32 of the 34 homes in our block, and outlined safety, parking, and traffic concerns for both Harper students and residents. The most crucial of these concerns will be summarized by my fellow residents. The parking variations requested by District 39 for the Harper School expansion exacerbate the existing safety, parking, and traffic concerns to an extent that is unacceptable. These concerns have been communicated to Harper School by Greenwood Avenue residents over the years and were not addressed. Current parking and traffic solutions provided by the school district since the January 16th Zoning Board of Appeals meeting are not permanent or enforceable. It is for this reason that the residents of Greenwood Avenue east of Harper School are requesting the parking restrictions. It's the only way we can ensure the safety and well-being of the children attending Harper School, as well as the residents on our block. Please note that those who have signed the petition, as well as all five speakers in our group this evening, are not opposed to the Harper School expansion and kindergarten enrichment program. In fact, some of the residents who signed our petition are parents who will enroll their children in this program. We simply need to have the safety, parking, and traffic concerns solved on our already congested street. We respectfully request the support of the Village Board of Trustees to delay approval of the parking variations until parking restrictions are in place on Greenwood Avenue east of Harper School. Thank you for your time and careful consideration of this request.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Cindy Meidlak. I am a resident at 2418 Greenwood Avenue. I am on the corner directly across the street from the school, so for the last 15 years that I have been there, I have had a bird's-eye view of just about everything that goes on at the school. So I want to thank you for the opportunity to share our thoughts, and I'm up here to talk a little bit about communication. I think the major frustration that we have had with this process is the communication process that has gone through. I have three children. My youngest is a sophomore at New Trier. They have gone through Harper, so I have been a benefit of constant communication from the school while my children were attending, and I've also seen the lack of communication once I became a resident and was no longer a part of that cycle. So we have met with the school, and we have read their communication, and we are looking forward to some improvements, but I really do want to stress with the Board tonight that we are very frustrated as residents with some of the lack of response that has occurred over the years, even prior to the petition request for the variance. It is not a new situation. We have discussed concerns for many, many years. I think what we realized is that there's different stakeholders in the community. There's the current families, and families that are attending the school, and they do have constant communication. The residents nearby were a little bit lacking, and we really are looking forward to having something that is a little more consistent and that alerts us to changes. I would like to just say that I think there are some changes that are done on the fly regarding transportation. When the school decided to change their dismissal, the one-way restriction was changed by the village, and residents were not asked for feedback about how the restrictions would affect them. The recent no-turn on, from Thornwood onto Dartmouth was something that was enacted by the school, recommended by their traffic study, and it was something that, once again, the residents were not asked for feedback on. So I think there's something with proactivity that we would like to see more of. I think in moving forward, our concern is that if the approval of the addition is granted before our parking and restriction, parking restriction requests on our street are granted, that the situation will continue as it is, or small minor changes will be made that do not really address our concerns. And so that we hope that the village will continue to communicate with the residents. We hope that the school will continue to communicate with the residents and solicit our feedback. We have lots of knowledge, we have seen lots of things, and we'd like to be included in the process. We believe all of this could lead to a better solution for everybody that's involved in it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening. Mark Meidlak, also 2418 Greenwood, the other half of the household. The primary point that I want to emphasize and stress, I guess, in our view is that we are concerned about safety. Safety for the children attending Harper, safety for the children who aren't attending Harper but live in the area, and of course, the other residents and their guests. And that's really the source of the frustration, because there's a normal amount of chaos that occurs during the carpool activity in the morning and afternoon, and I think we all accept a reasonable amount of that, but extra traffic and extra strain on already restricted resources, we think will make it more unsafe. Secondly, Greenwood Avenue, where the majority of us live, is really a parking lot for the school, and therefore, it is restricted for residents, and it's not the same safety concern, but if you're trying to back your car out of a street that's old, and everybody's got, for the most part, single driveways, it's a, it's a safety issue every day, and, you know, I've got to worry about my teenage kids driving, and so we think we need some relief from the parking lot on Greenwood. My last comment is really representing the staff and the teachers, the most important part of Harper. Now, I personally was embarrassed for myself that my wife had to point out that the parking over by Thornwood Park has not been plowed on a regular basis, and that the teachers have to walk over ice and snow on a regular basis. She brought that up, and again, I'm embarrassed, because I drove past that every day, did nothing about it. I want to say I did notice, for the first time, the, I don't know if it's whose truck it is, it's part of the school district, I'm shoveling, they're plowing, and for the first time, they went and did the lot over by Thornwood Park right away in the morning during the last snow. And I just hope that's a practice that can be incorporated in what we're doing here, because I really think our teachers should have a safe access to where they work as well. That's it, any questions?
Thank you, thank you.
Hi, I'm Mike Murray. I live at 2339 Greenwood, which is about halfway down the block that these other folks live on. I know the Board's been given a lot of information in advance of the meeting and at the meeting to digest about this. I thought I'd use my time to summarize exactly and specifically what it is that I and the other folks that are talking tonight would like to accomplish tonight. We'd like two things to come out of this meeting. First, we really do think that what we need here to solve the safety and traffic issues is a permanent and legally enforceable solution. You heard Dr. Lechner come up and say that the school cannot... You heard Dr. Lechner come up and say that the school cannot enforce the parking restrictions and that's the problem. As Elizabeth Matlin mentioned, what we've done is the residents of the twenty-three and twenty-four hundred block of Greenwood have already petitioned for permit parking and we do think that that would accomplish and alleviate a lot of the traffic and safety concerns on our block. The more cars that are parked on our block, the more likely it is that a kid is going to get hit. I've seen it personally almost happen several times and I think that as traffic congestion and parking problems increase, it's only more likely to do so. The only thing that can solve this problem, in my view, are official parking regulations on our block and/or on blocks and enforcement by the Wilmot Police, not by the school district. We all realize that you, the board, cannot approve the parking restrictions tonight and so what we're asking is that one of two things, either you defer your vote on the variation tonight until the parking issues and traffic and safety issues have been solved or at a minimum, if you do take a vote, that we would respectfully request that the board recommend to the Transportation Commission that these permit parking restrictions be put into place. Second request tonight is admittedly a much less tangible one and I think we've already gotten a long way there. We would like a commitment from the school district on the record to continue the very positive steps it started taking in terms of communicating with residents regardless of whether they get the variation that they're seeking or not. You've all read in your materials and heard about the frustration of numerous residents, including myself, about the new no-turn rule that was implemented this fall and at the intersection of Dartmouth and Thornwood. We know that rule and the sign that followed are also not something that the village is voting on tonight, but it is a great example of how something with a very legitimate intent can turn very badly into a public relations nightmare with residents and people who are not affiliated with the school. Dr. Lechner and Dr. Kik are both leaving at the end of this year, as you know. There will be a whole new set of parents that come in next fall as well as new teachers and that will continue every year after that. And what our biggest concern is here at the meeting tonight and with this variation is that we're going to find ourselves right back in the same position next year and every year after that, only with worse traffic and heightened safety and traffic concerns. Thank you for the time and attention.
Thank you. Question about something a previous speaker asked about. The parking lot alongside Thornwood, to plow that section, whose jurisdiction would that be or whose responsibility would that be? Would that be the park district or the village?
Depending on where the right-of-way line is, it's probably park district property, but the comment was made that it had been plowed, so while we were speaking, I've been messaging the Director of Public Works to find out if something changed, are we able to try and make some arrangement that it will, if that's necessary off-street parking, then we can work with the park district or whoever to see about trying to get that opened up.
And I've messaged the park district director at the same time, so we'll get that resolved.
We've got the problem surrounded.
Technology. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Pamela Shu. I live at twenty-five oh-one Thornwood Avenue. Unlike the previous speakers and some of their neighbors here tonight, I don't live on Greenwood. I live right next to Harper School. And the additional...
Behind the Druckers, right?
Say again?
Behind the Druckers.
Yes. Your neighbor's the Druckers. And so, and my neighbor's the Druckers. And I will say that the construction is expected to build right next to my house, but I'll get to that. So I hope that my comments will not be cut off and that in the interest of brevity, that my, the clarity of my remarks, don't require Mr. Frenzer to cut the mic or start the music to play me off.
Well, I've let everybody else have about an extra minute or so, so...
Okay. So I share the concerns raised by the residents of Greenwood Avenue. My house, as I said, is on Thornwood and my neighbor here tonight, Elizabeth Nebe, is located at Princeton and Thornwood and she has seen many changes in the sixty-four years she has lived here. She too sent a letter to the village board expressing her concerns and astutely observed, as others have, that our neighborhood has become a parking lot for Harper School. I join the speakers here tonight before me urging the board to withhold approval of the expansion at Harper until or unless the expressed safety concerns have been overcome. Expanding the school without adequate parking and traffic control is irresponsible. Harper's construction is the first planned expansion for Wilmot's four elementary schools. The matter before the board is not merely an issue of parking space variances, although that may be what it appears to be. Unless one watches District Thirty-Nine's school board meetings or reads the minutes, the proposed expansions at all four elementary schools might have escaped notice. The board's decision sets the table for future expansions upon which the district's plan depends. And it's planning to start the construction as early as June if this is approved and start the kindergarten full day in 2020, if I'm not mistaken. So the expansions will take hold at Harper, Central, McKenzie, and Ramona. All of these schools suffer the same safety and traffic issues and impairment to quality of life in our neighborhoods. It's important to understand that education and school standards change and that will undoubtedly increase staff and parking over time. One example is the delivery of special education services onsite at the schools instead of providing those special ed services offsite with corresponding demand for additional parking spaces for the staff who deliver those services. Residents are left asking, where will it end? Unenforceable assurances or expressions of good intentions and hopes for improvement are hollow and may produce only temporary periods of some improvement. Parking restrictions should extend to Thornwood Avenue as well as to Greenwood. On a personal level, the proposed construction will result in building new classrooms next to my house. With all the flooding and excess water control efforts undertaken by the village at great expense, I worry that the construction will put additional risk of flooding in my heretofore dry home. Will the village compensate me for the damage to my property? Recent freezing at Harper School field on Thornwood Avenue illustrate the pooling of standing water adjacent to my house? I respectfully submit that the approval of construction should be withheld and urge the following. Instead of expanding the footprint of Harper School, comprehensive and long-term plans should be developed for the expansion foreseeable at Central, McKenzie, and Ramona. I echo the excellent written suggestion of one of the Greenwood residents. Move the fourth grade classes to High Crest in order to find the desired space for all-day kindergarten at the elementary schools. You will recall, some of you, that the fifth grade, at least the fifth grade classes, were transferred to High Crest after it was transformed back to a school following its repurposing as a park district facility. The proposed plans are short-sighted and driven by quick and least expensive solutions. As I understand it...
I am going to ask you to wrap it up now. You're rolling on six minutes now.
The cost of the expansion is over five million and those are for all four schools. In addition, five million. I alert you to what I said in my letter, that notice has been given in writing and by other comments here tonight. And the zoning board voted against approving the variance. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would like to be heard? Okay. So we'll move on now. Harper School?
No.
This is just on Harper School?
Okay.
Sorry. So we've instituted a new process on zoning cases whereby I sort of take a straw pull of the trustees to see which way people are leaning to sort of guide the conversation because it's Dr. Lechner, I'll call you back up in a moment to address any of the comments that were made if you'd like. But, so we'll do that again. Who at this point in time is leaning in favor of the application?
Can I just, well, I think I should just intercept here because, I mean, as you know, I'm a Harper mom. I've been at Harper for eleven years, but alas, my youngest is in fourth grade, so this kindergarten expansion will not affect me, but I, you know, I know and love Harper and I know a lot of the neighbors that live nearby and have issues as well. So I just want to disclose that.
Well, we're still going to talk.
I understand, but before we start with the...
Yeah. Well, I just, the reason I'm asking is to try and to guide the conversation, to be efficient. So yes, trustee Dye.
So I know you want to take a straw vote, but I have some questions for maybe the engineer or something.
Oh, well, let's do that, okay. I thought we were, yeah.
Just have a few questions. I just wasn't sure about...
We can ask their questions first. So I didn't, I thought we were done asking questions of everyone, so...
I have just a couple of questions for, well, just based on some of the comments from the residents.
Yeah, okay, Dan, would you, Mr. Mannes, would you come up?
So just a question about when there is a change in a traffic pattern, whatever it may be, adding a stop sign to a particular intersection, changing things, you know, changing left turn, right turn, whatever, do we have a notification process in place? You know, so when, regardless of kind of this, you know, but in any change, not just at the school, but in any area within the community where we make a change in traffic, you know, changing a street from two to one or whatever, do we have a communication process in place to the residents surrounding that area?
I think it's a case-by-case basis, but generally, a parking restriction would warrant a letter to each impacted resident on the block where the parking restriction is being changed.
But in the situation where the residents are speaking tonight about, like, for example, instituting a change to left, you know, turning left or one-way or whatever, are those kinds of things generally, would we do that?
Yes.
Okay. And only because I think we're going to, might be sending some of this to the traffic...
Transportation.
Transportation, sorry. I might request that they look at just our notification process because I think it is important that residents are made aware of that. The second thing I had...
That one may not require, I mean, that seems like that could be a staff...
I know, I just, I'm just, I think it'd be helpful to be clear so that, I mean, that this is being raised. And then is there, is there a school speed limit on Greenwood?
I believe there isn't.
It is twenty on Greenwood.
East of Dartmouth?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. And then my third question is just, do we have, do you know, and maybe this is too specific and maybe this is a question for Dr. Lechner, but do we have other schools, other of our elementary schools or High Crest or Junior High where we have put in permit parking within that area? Is that something?
Resident-only permit parking. I know adjacent to other schools, there's heavy parking restrictions, but that are resident-only, I would have to do some further research.
Looks like Dr. Lechner...
Because I think we, the reason why I asked the question is I think consistency is...
Come up to the microphone just so people can hear you.
And it's more tied to the train situation, so we don't have commuters that park next to the school and walk. So we do it in those two schools.
Correct, I'm aware of that, but, okay.
So I wanted to follow up on that because I had a question for Dan. So I live on a block that has resident-only parking restrictions, eight in the morning till ten in the morning, as I recall. And I'm assuming, and that's because of Metro, and I'm assuming that happened as a result of, at some point, the Transportation Commission looked at this and made that recommendation. Is that, because this has been in effect for a long time before I...
Correct, that's the most common commuter restriction we have in the village, eight to ten, except by resident permit.
But we also have situations where it's, or I'm asking, where it's not just eight to ten, it's beyond that? Is that right or is it always?
Correct.
Okay, all right.
And then to answer Kathy's question, Greenwood west of Harper School is by resident. I think the AM restriction is resident-only.
Yeah, and my understanding, which that is the block I live on, my understanding is that's because we have no sidewalks, so the kids, when they leave the school, walk in the street.
Right, it's determined by, for safety reasons, yeah.
And I have a couple of questions for Dr. Lechner, if I may?
Absolutely.
Yes, thanks so much for being here tonight. I, as I was reading through this, I was thinking, you know, if all-day kindergarten is being implemented, have you guys, I'm sure you have, looked at what might happen at the other schools because all the schools really are kind of tucked into neighborhoods?
Yeah, and it's going to be less about number of students and more about additional staff with parking. So, and this is, and I'm grateful for this opportunity because I was unaware that we were not communicating effectively and we absolutely are going to change that practice at all of our schools. It's not just here. So it's been eye-opening.
Yeah, oh, that's great. And I know things do change also. It seems like since my kids were in school, I don't know if more parents are driving, but it seems like, you know, traffic patterns have changed and neighborhoods have changed. And also, I thought that was interesting about possibly switching kids to High Crest, but I know there's an addition. I'm assuming that's not so viable.
I love the idea, it's absolutely not viable. High Crest is just bursting at the seams. We added four classrooms just to, just so we could, you know, we didn't have even a principal's office because we used every bit for instruction, so there is, there is no opportunity for space. And I'm happy to report that all of our schools are bursting at the seams, that people are moving in in droves to be part of us, you know, part of our school system, so that's a good thing, whereas our neighboring school districts have declining enrollments, so that's, I'm, something I'm proud of, but there's no room for adjusting, because in adjusting, there's no, there's no room.
Okay, thank you, that's, that's very helpful for a little background here.
Yeah, and well, since we're on it, Mr. Mannes, one other question, the concerns about stormwater, I mean, the school district is just as bound by all the same regulations, the village regulations, the MWRD regulations and the like, that would not allow them to exacerbate an existing stormwater situation. Oftentimes, when developments like this happen, they have to improve the situation. Is that the case here as well?
Correct, and these plans have been reviewed by our development review consultant. I pulled them up while public comment was going on and noticed there are drains being placed along the west property line, so it should improve drainage in that area. And then all the additional stormwater runoff that's being generated by the addition is being collected in a large infiltration basin underneath the playfield. So there'll be a large seventy-five feet by twenty-five feet by a few feet deep storage area underneath the playfield. And that'll improve the situation, yes.
That's a significant improvement with the storage, okay. It's often a very expensive part of development nowadays mitigating the stormwater.
Right.
Trustee Plunkett?
Sure, and I'm not sure if this is for you, Dan, or, you know, who could kind of describe, you know, what the Transportation Commission can look at in terms of this because I know we have, you know, we have school policies in place and we have the civics and safety and we have a carpool line and, you know, with an increase, I understand that there's not an increase in enrollment anticipated and frankly, I thought there were more kids at Harper now than there were ten years ago when I started and I looked and I, I think it's really kind of stayed the same, but I know with an all-day expansion, you're going to have kindergarteners, more kindergarteners at pickup and those are little high-maintenance pickups as opposed to older kids. So I guess what I wanted to find out is, would the Transportation Commission be so detailed as to be looking at Harper's policies or are we just talking about a traffic study, parking restrictions, the possibility of a crossing guard? What are those parameters?
Any and all of the above. I mean, we'll definitely look at parking. We received the petition that was, had a high level of support. Typically, that means we'll do a parking study over a three-to-four day period in cooperation with the police department. We'll determine the capacity of park guards on the street, how many are non-residents, and those are all factors that the Transportation Commission will weigh. Commission will weigh when determining if the parking restrictions are supported. And then, we could also look at circulation in cooperation with the school district and determine what issues can be mitigated by modifications to their existing circulation and carpool plan.
I guess, and just one more thought about the traffic studies, I think elementary schools, unlike, you know, anything else that you want to do a traffic study for, is so different from the seasons. I mean, you have the fall and the spring where your issue is kids on bikes, kids on scooters, kids walking, parents walking, versus the winter where now, you know, everyone's in a car. And I, I just think that sometimes you see a traffic plan, and it may not really reflect what's going on throughout a school year, so, just to...
Yeah, it's a good point, we, we try to collect the data and do our observations during the most representative time of the year, and try to note any situations that could exasperate issues, like weather.
Other questions for the engineer? Okay, so, Dr. Lekner, actually, since we're doing questions, I'm gonna continue on questions until we're done with questions, and then we'll go back to where we were. So, from a timing point of view, what's the, what's the district's desired schedule here? You're trying, my understanding is you're trying to get kindergarten enrichment in place for the 2020 school year, what does that mean in terms of working backwards?
Yeah, that means that we're ready to go out for bid for the project, and we just need this approval to do that, because we, they're accurate that we want to start in June construction, because it's a, it's a, it's a big project, and it can't be done in a short amount of time. So for us to be successful, it needs to be now.
Right, because you, as a public body, you don't just hire the contractors, there's stuff you have to do as well.
The bidding process, we've got, we have our architect here this evening, we've gone through an extensive process to prepare, and we are now ready to bid.
Okay. All right, while Dr. Lekner's up here, any more questions for him?
Maybe I missed this in materials, how long was the construction time? I mean, I'm assuming you want to get the bulk done in the summer.
Yeah, we want to do a lot of the, the heavy lifting this summer for student safety, because if we start breaking ground in the fall, it's not a good thing. So we want to make sure that we get the initial, the initial work done, that's gonna have the most, you know, safety concerns done over the summer. And it's gonna take a year, it's gonna take at least about a year to finish it.
Okay. All right, any more questions for Dr. Lekner, the village engineer, Mr. Adler? Okay. All right, now I'll go back to asking people, and I apologize to the board, I thought we were sort of through the questions, I wasn't intending to cut people off at all. But just to guide our conversation, I'll take a straw poll now of where people are leaning, you're not committed to this, but where people are leaning on, on the application, and then we'll discuss, and we'll vote. So, who's leaning in support of the application? May I see a show of hands? Is that a hand, Dan, or is that a?
No.
No, okay. So who's leaning in opposition? And neither, you two aren't leaning, okay.
No.
Okay. That sort of defeats the purpose of a straw poll if you're not gonna vote, but, all right, so, well, for the two of you who didn't express an opinion, do you have concerns that we should be talking about?
Yes and no. To refer the matter into the Transportation Commission slash civics and safety sort of area, which I feel is ill-defined, I guess it does give me pause. The Transportation Commission, and I want to be delicate on this, they're volunteers just as we are volunteers, but that group's lack of proactive, proactivity in this, you know, is always a concern. So, I guess that direction, you know, if I were a parent, if I were in the neighborhood with these, these concerns, you know, I'd stop and wonder on that. But, you know, I find the issue very difficult, because I really respect our school district and want to give it what it needs to do its job, and as a parent, I've been thrilled with all-day preschool coming, so I appreciate those aims. I also live near a school, we have traffic challenges too, so I, I'm firmly on the fence and look forward to the conversation of my colleagues.
Okay. Trustee Sullivan, you were also on the fence here.
No, and I could, I will, I can support this, I think, you know, it was representative of the small poll that, that neighbors that came out tonight, who I appreciated that nobody was totally against it, that they're, everybody was for it, it's just a matter of, unfortunately, it takes sometimes these changes to get everybody talking and realize that there's a problem. And I think Dr. Lekner recognized that, and it was eye-opening that, you know, not for any wrong reasons, it's just the communication was missed, so we've got to get the transportation fixed. I think everybody is supportive of Harper and what we're doing in schools, and, and we want to do this, and, but, you know, we have to try and minimize and improve the impact to this neighborhood. Same thing happened in 2005, 2006, when we were looking to do Ronald Knox, and it was a long vetting process with the neighbors there. I'm hopeful that that's improved.
Back, back when you were at the, on the zoning board?
I was on the zoning board.
Yeah.
And, but hopefully, it's improved that impact, which is a school that we wanted to support as a community, so, I, you know, the timing and how we make sure, I, I do appreciate that they're going out to bid, I think I could support going forward with this, to get it out to bid, subject to, and how we confirm it, a number of improvements and steps taken to minimize and minimize the impact to the neighbors, if not make this much better and much more oversight. I do also have confidence that District 39, it's in their best interest to make the neighbors happy, because those are mostly who are supporting the school. So I think it's a good process, despite us losing two very good administrators this year, which from San Diego, but wish them well, but I'm confident that the new regime will also make sure that it gets better.
Yeah, I mean, I guess the question before us tonight, if we're gonna delay it, is, are we willing to delay kindergarten enrichment to 2021? That's a real question, are we gonna delay kindergarten enrichment to 2021? And I think you can do these in parallel, where you give the approval to District 39 tonight, and we make sure that the transportation questions are answered. There is a process that we go through for permit parking and the like, and I've got all the confidence in the world that, that neither District 39 nor the village is gonna all of a sudden say, "Oh, got the approval, yeah, all that stuff we promised in the meeting, you know, we're not gonna do that." And I've got confidence that even with Dr. Lekner and Dr. Kix's transition, that their successors are gonna honor that as well. So, I mean, that's sort of what it comes down to here is, and, and, you know, frankly, if you read the zoning board minutes, the reason it wasn't approved at the zoning board was to have this conversation, to keep, to make it an item that required the extra votes and required sort of the public hearing in front of the board. So, and I think that's been accomplished, so...
Which, actually, that bothered me a little, and one was, there were, there were only five members at the zoning board.
Right.
And no matter what, even if it got a four, five, nothing...
Right, we would've talked about it anyways.
We would've been having this conversation.
Yes, I agree.
If we had to do the right thing for the people.
I agree.
Sorry.
I agree, I, well, you as a former chair of the zoning board, you can have your opinion of the current chair of the zoning board opinions' actions.
I didn't say any names.
President Blinsky, so I think I want to go back to trustee Plunkett's question and maybe ask you, I think what I'm confused by is, what are we asking the Transportation Commission to do?
To listen to the neighbors and to evaluate their requests and...
So is it to evaluate their request for permit parking on Greenwood Avenue?
That's certainly in the Transportation Commission's purview, isn't it?
That's actually by ordinance, there's a, the board has an ordinance laying out the specific procedures for the Transportation Commission reviews the neighborhood permit parking.
Okay.
What blocks have to be given notice of it.
Okay.
When the timing of the studies have to be and timing for public notice, so there's actually a very detailed procedure in, it's a, it's a formal process with Transportation.
And so, for permit parking is a formal process?
Exactly.
But are we asking them as well to do another traffic study? Because we, I think what I'm confused on a little bit is, there was a traffic study done as part of this, and so...
No, my, I mean, my thought was...
Yep.
That this was a, sort of an evaluation hearing of how, what District 39's doing is working.
Oh, got it, okay.
So as, as an opportunity to speak to the Transportation Commission, there are certain things specifically in their purview, but to the extent that things aren't working out, use that as the forum to air those concerns, and then that puts it back, you know, then that puts it back sort of on District 39 and on the village to figure it out.
Right, okay.
And the question is, do we think we can figure it out? And I think we can figure it out, so...
By the way, this is all on record, I mean, we've, that, if it doesn't...
Right, exactly, it's like...
On record saying, "We're going to fix this," so, you know, I mean, neighbors, this is, you can continue.
Now, now, one thing's important here, okay? And this is just the reality of the world, we're talking about communications to the neighbors, but communication to the parents just as important, because, you know, look, we've all seen someone who's sort of, "Well, I'm in a rush right now, so it's okay if I break the rules, because you don't know I'm gonna miss my train if I don't take the, if I don't take the right turn out of, out of the junior high, and I'll just take the left turn instead, and it's only one car, so it's not gonna be a real big issue." I've seen it, we've all seen it, we've all seen the people who cut around the, the, the pickup line. We've, we've seen all these things, and the reality is, the district needs to constantly stress to our neighbors, our residents, the parents, that they need to be neighborly, that they need to be courteous, and that they need to be respectful of the neighbors, you know? Parking in front of someone's driveway, that's, it's just not what you're supposed to do as a neighbor, and it happens. And so, we can put all these regulations in place, but if we don't convince the parents to cooperate, like, you know, you're still gonna have problems, you're gonna say, "Somebody parked in front of my driveway yesterday." Well, they're not supposed to, and, and I think that's part of the district's plan, I know of, I, I think I've read it, that we need to constantly be communicating with the parents as well, like, "Look, you know, be a good neighbor here, we all live together here, and, and, and do the right thing, don't make the right turn when you're not supposed to make the right turn, don't park in front of someone's driveway, don't double park in front of, you know, and block the street, because I'm, I'm only gonna be gone for five minutes, it's okay." It's not, it's not okay. So, and the people who live close to schools, and we've got a lot of schools in Womet, the elementary schools, the middle school, the junior high, Loyola, Regina, St. Francis, St. Joe's, Ronald Knox, Baker, I mean, these are issues that exist everywhere, and, and we just, we need to stress out all of these, the schools to, please, ask the residents to, or ask their parents to think about it from the neighbor's point of view. So, I'm sorry, I got on the soapbox there, I apologize.
I, I also think that the individuals who live right next to Harper, whatever rules are adopted, they, they have to recognize, they, they have to be comfortable of making sure they're enforced. The police are very responsive to, my experience has been, I lived right next to Pioneer Press for many years when it was still there. Pioneer Press was not thrilled with me, because I was aware of the rules, and I was aware that the police would enforce, you can't park here during certain hours. And when you live next to a, some type of a commercial establishment in, in a neighborhood area, you're gonna have this tension, and so you just have to be comfortable with being a champion for yourselves, and I think the police will be very responsive to whatever rules come up.
I like our free-form discussion better than just the go-around-the-horn thing, so, other thoughts, trustee Plunkett?
Well, I mean, the hard thing is, tonight, we're really voting on, should they get a variance for three parking spaces? I mean, that's, that, that one is not so hard, because it, it's three parking spaces, and I really think that the staff parking, I think they can really be encouraged to park elsewhere, so hopefully that, they won't add to the congestion. And it's not an easy job enforcing the, the parking, and it's not an easy job being on civics and safety, but I really think that it's gonna have to be a new partnership in, you know, decide how this whole all-day kindergarten is gonna work, because, you know, having an extra 20 to 30 little ones being picked up at the same time is gonna be a lot harder, and I, I don't even know if, like, staggered dismissals are even an option, but I think that that is gonna have to be, you know, a discussion with that, and then with the Transportation Commission, you know, a general neighborhood parking discussion is gonna be important.
Anybody else? Comments, questions, thoughts?
I mean, I could just share a thought, which is, you know, I also live right near school. I live near Central School, and so I appreciate, you know, how you guys feel and how the residents feel, and I think that this is just a real difficult thing for us, because our schools are in our neighborhoods. And our neighborhoods, you know, and they're there in the neighborhoods for a reason, which is people want to be able to walk and bike to school. And we, so this is, but the other thing I was gonna say to Dr. Lekner is that I wish your new superintendent was here tonight, I really do, and I would encourage her to listen to this, because this is not going to be the first school of residents that will come in front of us, and we should be aware of that. And this is a learning, and I feel bad for the residents on Harper that, you know, the learning's happening here. I am too, like the other people said, confident that, you know, District 39 and the school board is, is committed to making these plans successful, but it is important that the new superintendent understands the kind of communication that the members of the community want and deserve. And so I encourage you, and I'm confident, I've worked with you a lot, and I'm very respectful of your communication, and I love your, that you always admit mistakes so openly. I think that that's, as you know, I think that's a huge strength of yours, and I just would really encourage you to have the time you need to share those learnings with your new staff and also the new principal of school. I think these, you know, issues that the residents raised are really tricky, so...
Any further comments, thoughts, questions for anybody here? All right. Again, this item comes to us with a negative recommendation from the Zoning Board of Appeals. It will need five votes tonight to overturn the recommendation of the Zoning Board, and affirmative vote is a vote to overturn the Zoning Board of Appeals recommendation. Madam Clerk, please call the roll on the motion.
Trustee Wolf?
Aye.
Trustee Sullivan?
Aye.
Trustee Plunkett?
Aye.
Trustee Dodd?
Aye.
Trustee Kersman?
Aye.
Trustee Pierce?
Aye.
President Blinsky?
Aye. So motion carries, the Zoning Board of Appeals recommendation has been overturned. Dr. Lekner, as I think you know the process, so it wasn't approved tonight, it will be approved on the consent agenda at the next board meeting, which is March 12th, right? Yes. Okay.
So I guess I do have a question, and that is, is this matter now automatically assigned to Transportation? I mean, in terms of everything we've been talking about?
The filing of the petition triggers them to have to conduct the hearing process.
Okay, all right, fine, thank you.
Okay, so now we'll move back to our more normal order of business. I'm gonna handle a couple more things, and then I have to depart. Trustee Pierce has offered to take the gavel as president pro tem in my absence, but I'll get through a couple more. So, item four is report of officers, and item 4.1 is announcement of the cancellation of the March 26, 2019 regular village board meeting. Actually, we'll pause for a second and let, let the folks exit. Okay, so item four, I'll say it again, item 4.1 is announcement of cancellation of the March 26, 2019 regular village board meeting. Next, we'll move on to a report from our village manager, Mr. Frenzer.
No report, Mr. President.
Next report is from our corporation counsel, Mr. Stein.
No report, Mr. Vier.
Next item is the report of the Liquor Control Commissioner, and there is no report tonight. It would be best if I left now. Can you handle the last, last three items?
Sure.
Or last four items? So, excuse me all, I have to go to the airport.
Yes. The clerk notes the imminent departure of the presiding officer, is there a motion to appoint President Pro Tem, please?
So moved.
Now, who, which you care to make an appointment?
I'm off tonight. Trustee Pierce.
Sir, a second.
Second.
Any further nominations? Hearing none, the nominations are closed, all in favor of trustee Pierce being president pro tem, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, without objection, trustee Pierce?
So do I move?
If you'd like, yes.
You have the power.
You have the power.
We are up to item five, and then we'll return to item two.
So, we already had the report of the Liquor Control Commissioner, then we have standing committee reports, land use, everything has been covered. Finance Committee?
No report, Sydney.
Administration Committee?
All items on consent.
Municipal Services Committee?
All items on consent.
Public Safety?
No report.
Okay. Judiciary?
All items on consent.
Okay. Any reports from special committees?
None.
Okay. Any new business?
No.
So, now we go to public comment?
Yes, returning to item 2.0.
Okay, so now we have item 2.0, which is public comment, and this is where we allow members of the public who would like to address us on a matter that's not on the agenda. Is there anyone here that would like to do so?
Yes, please come forward.
Welcome, could you state your name?
My name is Kabbalah Mohammed.
Okay, welcome.
Hi, I'm here with my classmates from Loyola Academy, and in our justice seminar classes, we have been learning about affordable housing, and we've been researching Womack's current plan and initiatives. We are really optimistic about Cleveland Place and where we can go with that, but we do think that more can be done with it. We have two asks from the, everybody on the board, and number one, with number one being reactivating the Housing Commission, and number two being revamping the previous affordable housing plan. We pa, we plan on coming back soon, and we hope to see it on the upcoming agenda. Thank you, thank you everybody for your time.
Thank you. So, the place you mentioned, what was it called?
The 1925 Womack Avenue Affordable Housing by HODC, the Housing Opportunity Development Corporation.
Good, thank you very much. Are there other, anyone else in the public? Any other matters?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Good job.
Second.
First time.
Is this roll call?
No.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.